Yep.
Okay, I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Genoa Township Board of Trustees. The time is 6:30. Today's date's February 26, 2025. Can I get roll call, Joe?
Roll call, trustee Vaughn.
Here.
Trustee Antonins.
Here.
Trustee Goodman.
Here.
Also with us this evening is Joe Shafter, Director of Development and Zoning, Paul Benson, Deputy Zoning Inspector, Rafiq Uden, Deputy Zoning Inspector. For the record, this meeting of the Genoa Township Trustees will be recorded. The meeting audio and written minutes will be available on Genoa Township's website, www.genoatwp.com, or by contacting Genoa's Fiscal Office. The first item on the agenda is discussion about Ohio EPA's Section 208 Plan and the proposed resolution. So just to set the background on this, 208 Plan is a requirement by the EPA for any facility that owns and operates a wastewater treatment plant, essentially establishes their service area. So I know Renee spent a lot of time collaborating with other townships and officials, including Delaware County Sanitary Engineering Office and even the Ohio EPA. I have a little bit of background based on my engineering experience on these 208 plans. So there is concern amongst pretty much all of the Delaware County townships about this proposed 208 Plan. The EPA is requesting specifically Delaware County's sanitary sewer operating systems to update their 208 Plan. And that has impact, impacts on several of the townships in Delaware County that are adjacent to or surrounded by an existing wastewater treatment plant operation system. So having said that, we both, I guess we didn't participate. I had to do it by phone. They had a town hall meeting with the Ohio EPA, the Delaware County Engineers Office, and probably every township that's impacted by this, and State Representative Brian Lorenz. And Renee and I both listened. We weren't able to attend, but I was going to ask Renee to give a briefing on why this is even on our agenda.
So the deadline for the EPA, they're trying to redraw their plans for the first time since 2006. I find it ironic that the EPA decided to email townships after meeting with the county and several municipalities sent out a blast email on New Year's Eve 2024, after they were working on this for over a year. So of course, many of us overlook the email. We get a lot of emails from state agencies and elected officials. A lot of times, the information doesn't pertain to us. So most of us, this wasn't on our radar until we received an email from the Director of Sanitary Sewer for Delaware County, Tiffany Magg. So I do appreciate the EPA willing to meet with township officials last week. I did, Kyle Brooks from the Ohio Township Association did arrange a Zoom call with me and two EPA representatives. They heard my case, but I do think that it's just, they're checking the boxes at this point. I'm not sure, no matter the amount of pushback, I'm not sure it's going to stop this. So I took a few notes from last week's meeting, and then I've just been compiling information over the last month. The EPA last week said that it creates the rules, but they don't have the authority. It's kind of like the township. We have the authority to change zoning, but we don't deal with drainage. That's the county, or roads. That's the county. So they make the rules, but they don't have the authority to uphold other things. For instance, it was asked that, okay, if you draw these 208 sewer boundaries and you change them, can you mandate then that if municipality provides sewer within those boundaries that are in township land right now, can you mandate that if you receive government funding that they cannot annex? And they said, well, we don't have the authority to mandate that. So the EPA says the 208 Plan shouldn't coincide with zoning. Well, we all know that the ramifications of that is it will. If you put the boundary on the east side of Hoover down to Harlem Road, they say that doesn't precede annexation. Well, Joe and Paul and I met with the mayor of Galena two weeks ago and asked him about the boundary, and he said, make me a deal, which means if it's not tomorrow, it'll be 10, 30, 50 years from now, that land will be annexed if Galena provides sewer on the east side of Hoover. So the other thing is that the EPA said that whatever the plan is, it should coincide with zoning documents for municipalities or townships. Well, that's proof on the other side that that plan does not coincide with our zoning. Our zoning right now says that that Planning Area 3 should be rural residential. So it contradicts our zoning. So right there is a reason to move the boundary. It was repeated over and over at last week's meeting that the only way to protect townships is to keep the boundaries wherever the municipalities provide sewer right now. That's where the boundary should be, because if you draw them anywhere else into township property, it will remove the township's ability to negotiate with municipalities in regards to annexation. There will be no incentive for them. They don't have to. They win. So I think, wow, I'll get there in a minute. If they, if they draw the lines where they are, it's just going to encourage more annexation. We'll, all townships will be gobbled up. It also creates an economic hardship for townships, because Delaware County won't be able to then go into certain areas of townships because municipalities are providing sewer. They'll cut off access. They said in the meeting, they don't like duplicate lines, which I agree. It's more economical for everybody. If you don't have Galena sewer on one side of the street and Delaware County's on the other, which is happening in some areas of Delaware Township right now, and they don't want that. I don't want it either. But you're going to cut off Delaware County's ability to provide sewer in certain areas of townships, which will create more annexation. It was brought up last week that it's more advantageous for the county to provide sewer, because if a resident's septic system is failing, the county can mandate that they tap into sewer, whereas a municipality can't. The county also has the ability that if there's a new housing development coming in and they are close to sewer, say a rural, even a rural residential lot, and they're within so many feet of a sewer line, they can mandate that the resident tap into the sewer versus create their own septic system. So the county actually has more authority than municipalities. So in that respect, it's better. The EPA keeps saying that, yes, they haven't updated this plan since 2006, but their goal is to update it every two to five years. So it was brought up that, then why wouldn't you create these boundaries to only encompass what municipalities can reasonably reach in two to five years? We know Harlem isn't going to be able, or sorry, Galena isn't going to be able to reach Harlem Road in the next two to five years. That's like nearly impossible. So why is the boundary so far south? I'll give a shout out to Mike Fry. He's a Galena Council member. He actually attended. He wasn't invited, but he crashed it, which we all appreciated because of his comments. He said that the wishes of the current Galena mayor and two former mayors does not coincide with a lot of what the people, the residents in Galena envisioned for their village. For instance, they, they don't want to grow their kingdom like the mayors are. They want to preserve the village as a village, and they want to keep it small. The EPA hasn't done their homework. It was brought up by a trustee in Troy Township that the EPA is redrawing Delaware City's sewer lines further north up into Troy Township. Well, Delaware City just turned down a zoning development two months ago because they didn't have enough sewer capacity on the north side of the city. So why would the EPA then grant them more boundary if they can't even take care of what they have right now? So my question is, does Galena have a funding mechanism to get to the boundaries in the new plan? I think no, but I think it should be on Galena to prove it. If they want to give you that much boundary or square footage acreage on the other side of Hoover, prove that you can service it. Delaware County Sewer, in their letter to the EPA, says that they have a proven track record of providing excellent sewer service at a reasonable cost, and they've been able to keep up with the growth, and they project to continue to do that. And they won't take a loan. They have the money to increase their sewer lines without taking loans, which most municipalities can't do. So my proposal is get rid of this 208 Plan, which the EPA created to regulate sewer as part of the Clean Air and Water Act, which the federal government tasked them to do, but they created this. This is their own regulation that they've made up. So instead of creating these sewer boundary lines that are arbitrary, come up with a system that's much like a grant program, where if a municipality wants to expand or the county wants to expand their sewer, they have to present their project to the EPA, and they would have to review all the documents, and whether it's financially feasible, and they would have to have approval. Much easier, much simpler, and it would be property, you know, each, each project at a time. And then if they need funding, then that would be part of that application. We need matching money or whatever. That's, that's all I have. Sorry.
That's a lot, that's enough. And we're having this discussion because there is significant township property adjacent to Galena, on the south side of Galena, the east side of the reservoir, that they have designated in their 208 Plan as their service area. Significant, it's probably six to 700 acres of primarily undeveloped land that's the biggest parcels that we have left in our township. There is a saying, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, and we feel like that we weren't provided the opportunity to be at the table. These areas were decided in a vacuum without us participating, and that's the reason why we have this resolution opportunity, because collaborating with the county and these other townships, we're trying to take some action to be able to at least say, these decisions should be made that are impacting our township. We should be involved in that discussion, and we weren't provided that opportunity. So Connie, anything you want to add?
Well, I think it's been presented very well. One of the things that, I have a question for trustee Vaughn. When we talked about this last time, you had said something about the Galena mayor indicated that he wasn't interested in annexing or forcing Genoa Township into this agreement. But what I just heard you say is that, that tune has changed a little bit. And you know, honestly, I wouldn't trust anything that's not in writing, and I've said that here before.
Yep.
So you know, if he's going to go with Plan A or Plan B, we need whatever it is in writing. I think it's also inappropriate that for years, we have relied on Delaware County to do sewer in Genoa Township, and they've done an amazing job. Many of us that live in the newer subdivisions with sewer, I can say, knock on wood, I've not had a problem with it. I worry about new people going into this that may or may not have the background, the funding, the ability to pay back whatever loan they're getting. So I, I think that this is a plan that, again, was not thought through completely and clearly was made by some people that didn't take input from everyone that was involved, at least the, the main players, the trustees and the administrators, et cetera. Somebody should have been aware of this before it got to this point.
I agree.
So.
Thank you.
It's my two cents.
And I, is there a website we can send them to to see this plan that identifies these 208 areas? I can't, I'm sure there is.
There is. If you, if you Googled 208 Plan Delaware County, it'll come up. It's, it's on the EPA's website. It is kind of buried, but the EPA, I think, has seven or eight different plans, and you got to dig through it, but you want to look for central Ohio, Delaware County.
And you can also see City Columbus's 208 Plan, which, by the way, reaches up into Harlem Township. So.
And do public comment?
Yeah. So we have a resolution we're going to consider, and I would like to open it up to public comment to anybody that wants to provide some discussion value, questions. Nothing? Name and address.
Catherine Nelson, 4000 O3C, Galena. First of all, thank you guys for giving us an opportunity for our voices and having this meeting. I strongly urge that you reject this, this proposal. Number one, it's, and I won't get in the weeds, because you've, you've all did your homework, and you know why, and there's a bunch of people here that understand it. It's, once again, it's a government overreaching. And I did do a lot of research on it. The one thing that I'm kind of confused about is I couldn't find where they were proposing this in other, any other counties. It seems like they're targeting Delaware County, and it just makes a lot of suspicion in my mind. You know, we're growing, we're doing this, we're the fastest. So I don't think there's true motivation behind this. And once again, I think it's overreaching. Trustee Vaughn, thank you for your homework. That was very enlightening, and thank you for opening up for our voices.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I answer a question? Yeah, it isn't happening anywhere else. There's six areas in northeast Columbus. That's why this whole 208 Plan started. They, they run their own 208 plans, and the state is not involved. So all the other entities in the state, the state runs their 208 plans. They started with Delaware County because of the growth. And, and their plan is to go to all the other counties in central Ohio, but they started with us.
I find it amazing that they're not starting where there's less development, but they know the growth is going to come. Union County, you know, I, it just, there's no common sense here in this, once again, overstretching. So anyways, thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you.
And Mary Howard, 1765 South Galena. And I also wanted to thank you guys for having us, because although in the beginning of the meeting, you stated that there was a good chance nothing would stop it, you guys are giving it your effort, and I sincerely appreciate that, because if we don't fight it, then for sure, we'll go through. So hopefully, people will start to listen, because if we don't stop this, in 10 years, there won't be a township, any kind of township associations, and we will all be living in cities or villages. So thank you guys very much. I don't have a, you guys have covered it all, so thank you.
Thank you. Would you care to explain a little bit about the resolution? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Brian Lorenz. I'm the state representative for the 60th Ohio House District, which does not include Genoa Township, but I'm here as an interested party, also as a professional land use planner who has lived in Delaware County for the past 30 years and who has seen, you know, these types of advancements or philosophies or things like that. And I, in the, in the spirit of full transparency, I wanted you guys to know, I did attend a meeting last week with the Delaware County Township Authority where the, the 208 Plan was discussed. And I know about 208 Plans, sorry, from my background and whatnot. Again, as a former city council member for the city of Powell, former mayor for the city of Powell, I, you know, my, my skillset really lies on the municipal side, so kind of looking at both ways. But you know, one of the things that I left from that meeting from my constituents over on the western part of Delaware County was the lack of transparency on the advancement of the plan. And you guys mentioned it earlier on, too. It's really important to me that we have these conversations fully vetted. I know that some of the cities have had conversations on it. My inclination on it was that the townships were left out. And so I would implore you to work with the EPA to have those conversations as well. You know, for me, this is, it's, and I've heard it from both sides, right? So I completely understand it, you know, and Powell, we never had a sewer system. We always worked through Delaware County. But I think that it's really important that townships get their say, their buy-in on this, and you know, it really comes down to me as a planner, a home rule type thing, and really a property right thing. So I'm just here as a observer. My office is here to help out. I know I don't represent you, but that's okay, and I'm just here to listen to what you guys have to say. And if we can do anything for you in the State House to kind of equal the table, I'm happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Do you need my address, too? I always forget. 4111 Village Club Drive, Powell, Ohio.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
So we have a resolution.
You got one more?
Oh, sorry.
Rick Whelan, 9500 Britton Woods Drive, Galena. So, you know, just hearing this pretty much for the first time, I don't know if we need to consider bringing more people in to get some more public comment on this stuff, or the trustees should have, you know, an additional meeting or something and notify people mostly in that area of Section 3 and that type of stuff up there?
I've tried.
You've got Sage Creek residents, you've got, I don't know if you-
Sage Creek is well aware. I've contacted their HOA. They are fired up.
All right. Well, what needs to be done then? So I know you were talking about a resolution or whatever and stuff. Is that pretty much the only step that we have?
Well, the public comment period is over by the end of business day, Friday.
For what? For Delaware County stuff?
For EPA, for this project. So they will hear any and all public comment until Friday at the end of business.
Where's that at?
I can say, well, you can send an email. I can, I can send it to you.
Okay.
That's what they're asking.
All righty. And then they want to stick to their decision after that date or whatever and stuff?
They said if there's any unresolved business, they would postpone their decision. We'll see.
Yeah.
I'm not holding my breath.
That's a good question.
Right. Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. There's a lot of questions can come up fast here or whatever and stuff, so. So I don't know, did you talk to anybody in Trenton Township and stuff about this?
Trenton Township was at the meeting last week.
Were they?
Yep.
Okay. And then Harlem Township, were they there?
They were, one representative was there.
Okay.
Yep.
Did you hear much from those people at all or not?
One trustee showed up, but Harlem Township passed a resolution. I listened to the meeting live, and they passed a resolution saying that they were not opposed to the 208 Plan. They were in favor of first come, first served, and they were not opposed to working with Galena.
So they're kind of opening themselves up to everybody?
They're naive.
Yes.
Right, right.
Because they've got Columbus not, you know, coming up on our south end or whatever and stuff anyways, and Johnstown's got capacity and stuff up there, too, for Harlem Townships. All right. Well, that's why I wanted to find out if there's any other things that we can do to, you know, to put a roadblock in this stuff or what?
Let your neighbors know.
Huh?
Let your neighbors know.
Yeah. Well, where does it go from here, then? You know, you just have to stay-
Goes to EPA, and it's in their hands.
All right.
But ultimately, it goes to the state representatives, and then it goes to Dewine, for Dewine's signature. So, you know, it goes up the chain.
Or the next governor.
Yeah, depending on.
All right, thanks.
All right, so the resolution essentially just recognizes that Delaware County is the statutory authority for providing sanitary sewer service to the unincorporated areas of the township. And most all of these facility planning areas operate, just plants are in incorporated areas, including Galena, City of Delaware, Sunbury. So we are supporting Delaware County, who's putting forth an effort also to try to fight this on our behalf. So that's the point of the resolution. So if there is any more comment, I move to adopt the proposed resolution in the matter of opposing the Ohio EPA's proposed facility planning area maps for Delaware County as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? None? Ever?
Roll call, trustee Vaughn.
Yes.
Trustee Goodman.
Yes.
Trustee Antonins.
Yes. Motion passed. So the next item on the agenda is a zoning hearing. In an effort for transparency, my firm is representing the applicant, Harris Automotive. We did his original building when I was on the zoning commission, and to avoid any conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself from this portion of the hearing, and Vice Chair Renee Vaughn will run the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Enjoy your evening. All right. I will call the following here to order at 6:56 PM and read the public legal notice. Carl Ruser requesting approval of the final development plan amendment to construct an appropriately, approximately 6,000 square feet addition on approximately 2.6 acres located on 6319 Maxtown Road, Westerville, Ohio 43082, PIN 31734201017000. Currently zoned planned industrial district, also known as Harris Automotive, ZC Case number 2024-06. Anybody wishing to speak, if you could stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. You can have a seat. All right. The legal notice for this meeting was printed and published on February 15, 2025, in the Delaware Gazette and posted at the Genoa Township Hall on February 21, 2025. An attempt to send notice of this meeting to adjacent property owners was also made. The following were marks as Exhibits A through I. Exhibit A, legal notice. Exhibit B, affidavit of advertisement. Exhibit C, sign-in sheet. Exhibit D, application and plans. Exhibit E, fire marshal letter dated November 21, 2024. Exhibit F, trustee acknowledgement of the zoning commission's recommendation. made on February 11, 2025. Exhibit G, staff technical review dated February 19, 2025, for February 26, 2025. Exhibit H, staff memo dated February 19, 2025, for February 26, 2025. Exhibit I, all public comments received between November 12, 2024 and February 26, 2024. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Joe Schaefer for the staff review.
Thank you, trustee Vaughn. We did post it on February 12.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay. There's a lot to read there. So I'm going to dive into the staff report. I won't read it line by line. The legal description covers a lot of it. So yeah, as you can see, they basically wish to expand the existing automotive repair use on this property by 6,000 square feet. You can see it sort of would be a new wing sort of located north, northeast corner of the existing wing and sort of create a somewhat of a little bit of a backwards help shape that would all be tied together and parking field around it. The proposed building contains local service days for vehicles, and there are portions of the existing site improvements that would have to be removed in order to construct this, essentially all the parking spaces that are on the current east side of the existing building, as well as the portion of the sidewalk along the eastern side of the building so we could construct the expansion as well as create a new sort of park, open parking field area in the middle for them to move the vehicles in and out of the service space. So I think we're all pretty familiar with this site in terms of locations of the West Virginia J Company. The east is the building that had less construction. The north are homes, and then the south is more industrial property located within the city of Westerville, city owners. There's a lot of history to this property here. It actually used to be part of the development plan that approved the building that J Company was, that is in. It actually was going to be based on the second building that's here. What J Company was in never happened. Probably sat there for many years. Eventually, Harris Automotive, in long, decided they were going to put it to good use. Got final development plan approval several years ago, as you probably recall, back in 2018. Got it approved, and they've been operating there basically ever since. They did think about possibly splitting off the property at one point, decided not to approve it. So it's, the eastern half of the lot has basically been sitting vacant. And, you know, I think they sort of knew they were land vacant or eventually trying to expand it. And staff sort of knew that. So here they are before you. You can do that very thing. So no changes were proposed for the site's existing access or any required by the city of Westerville. We had email confirmation of that back in November. Materials regarding parking, the number of proposed parking spaces, 58, which includes two 88 accessible spaces, which exceed the number required by the zoning resolution for this site, which is 202. Approximately 11 existing spaces, as I noted, would be moved for the expansion, but they're more than made up for by additional parking spaces that are being added. Loading zone designated by painted stripes to the east of the proposed expansion is shown on the site. No pedestrian access amenities or existing proposed or required with the exception of the internal sidewalk that I mentioned. Lighting, parking lot fixtures, parking lot light fixtures are proposed, only building on it fixtures. And then the spillover light for the building on it fixtures will be provided for lighting for the parking lot. It appears the intention is just, I already said that, sorry, moving along. Regarding the landscape, the existing green space buffer between the homes, the northern developed area of the site, exclusive from stormwater basin will be maintained. Existing trees in this area will also be maintained with the caveat that there is a sanitary sewer easement in the months along the north side of this property and subject to maintenance, including clearing by any one holding lights in that easement. The existing fence along the rear of the developed portions of the site with the extended curb eastward to provide similar screening across the back of the proposed expansion area. So if you go to the site now, you drive back into that rear area, that entire back parking lot that's there now, it's a picket fence across the entire back of that. So if you're on the other, the north side of it, you cannot, you can see obviously the building above the fence line, but you can't see, you might see a trailer too, maybe sticking above that fence. By and large, you don't see the tire, you don't see the cars parked there. It's all hidden. And that treatment would be continued, like I said, eastward along newly proposed parking section. And then they also are bedding it south where it even provides some protection. If you're viewing it, you're sort of in the northeast looking southwest. Continuous road box with shrubs proposed along the portion of the proposed parking lot facing Maxtown Road, the new portion that is. Several existing trees in the eastern half of the site will also have to be removed and constructed for the proposed expansion. Landscape screening is not required by the zoning resolution along most of the eastern property line due to the aforementioned commercial zoning in that property. No changes to existing signage on site are proposed. And my memo says here that they needed to confirm that. They have confirmed that, so we don't have to worry about that anymore. There are no changes to public utility connections being proposed in terms of stormwater and drainage, the existing stormwater retention facility in the northern end of the site will be expanded eastward. The company, the additional impervious surface areas and the associated drainage infrastructure. However, I wouldn't call it like a true pond. I mean, like I, I just happen to be out there today in that area. To be untrained, I would not believe it was even a stormwater. So an elevation drawing has been provided to illustrate the intended design of the expansion. Moving into divergences, the following divergences were previously granted as part of the final development plan and remain valid in ones that we cannot alter or change or rescind from them. Number one to Section 130303, that which required that a 75-foot landscape green strip be provided between the proposed site and neighboring residential uses for the northeast. Previous approved applications for this site had already reduced that required, set back down to 50 feet and went to Z C case number 2008-07. The divergence also allowed the development plan, or the development not to plan a combination of shrub and trees throughout the entirety of that segment. The divergence was previously granted to Section 130309B, which requires all automobile parking lots and screen for the building residential properties in the form of 20, as well as to Section 130607, which requires visual and mechanical barriers, five and a half to eight feet in height, be provided along any lot lines of the site that would be based into residential properties. So basically, this proposal doesn't change that, and you can't retroactively rescind those or require them to bring up the rest of the site's proposals. The vested divergences, we have to honor them regardless of how we, you know, anyone they feel about that. They are what they are beyond honor. So no additional divergences are being requested. However, the plan is utilizing previously approved divergences, as I noted, to accommodate the exact layout. Staff comments, utilization of the subject property in the existing proposed manner is generally consistent with the comp plan, which recommends industrial zoning and land use in support of this property. My technical review is attached. I'll get to it momentarily. The interview will be very brief. On January 10, 2025, the zoning commission declared a subject application on major amendment pursuant to the terms of the resolution. And subjectively voted to recommend approval of the application to the trustees, which conditions that several items and materials were deemed up. Part of the submission. Only portions of the site that are being developed or revised are again subject to terms of zoning resolution. And I sort of talked about how we can't record the applicant bringing up the code. The applicant has opted to not copy and respond to any potential portion of the development tax, but rather to make it text and more consolidated, simplified manner, similar to what was done with the plan. This proposal is amended back in 2018, which is Z C case number 201802 for the record. For what is worse, staff finds this approach to be generally acceptable so long as compliance with all applicable regulations and resolutions is sufficiently demonstrated. This is due to the following. Number one, as noted, the prior development plan text was formatted in a similar way. Two, this is a plan amendment and not a new final development plan. You can only see the amended portions of the plan comply. And three, confusing and complicating factors that have existed with other previous final development plan amendment applications, which had to deal with, don't exist yet. Those previous approved materials are, the previous approved materials here are clearer and more accurate with the block system conditions relative to some similar types of applications we have in the past. Best in part because the existing development on site was recently, has not been amended multiple times before and is generally constructed in accordance with the prior plans. It's a fact difference in the reality. Large scale revisions to design resolution are currently also being considered by the township, which might, amongst other things, significantly alter the overall format and layout of the code rendering. I'm sorry, cut off there. Basically, if, if, there were copies of code as is now and we change it this year or the next few months, it's not going to sync up with whatever the new layout is. So I didn't see it necessary to make them go through all that effort. It's not going to be possible to match up here in the near future. Proposed driveouts are significantly wider than township requirements, presumably to accommodate larger vehicles such as tow trucks and delivery trucks. Proper intended traffic flow could be somewhat difficult to discern on site due to the wide slots obtained, sort of there in the middle without marking. They did put some of that striking on there as I requested. And I, I do think there is a reason for some of those wider areas. Like I said, they're going to have larger vehicles on site. They're going to have to move vehicles in and out of the days. You might have some stacking that now and then. So generally, I would not prefer to see large sort of areas of parking that sort of don't have the direction on. But on a site like this, where you've got that kind of movement of vehicles, I think it makes a little bit more sense. During the first and only meeting, you know, I'm going to skip that part because it was relative to a case that ended up being withdrawn. And I couldn't went through the zoning commission meeting in terms of any of these issues concerned. There were some concerns at one point from the property owners to the north several years ago, but I think all those concerns have been addressed. I had heard from them, of course, because that was a 2019 detail about stuff from 2019. The applicant, I did ask the applicant to, you know, skip item H because we've already crossed the major minor threshold. So again, provisions to the final development plan as well as this amendment are limited to those requested herein unless otherwise approved by me in accordance with the authority I have under Section 27101 of the resolution. Approval approvals, this amendment would be subject to the time limits outlined in 2712.19 of the resolution, which is kind of years. And if this application is approved, the applicant will have to apply in the, the own permit obviously prior to construction permits. So that concludes the memo. Like I said, the tech review's going to be brief because they pretty much addressed all the comments. As you can see, struck through, the only comments remaining unstruck through are basically the standard informational comments. You can even see the item that the zoning commission wanted to see addressed on the last page of the tech review, items 2A, 2B, I am struck through, that review is running in the meantime. So with that, I'm throwing.
Thank you. And then I'll let the applicant speak, any and all. If you, and before you speak, if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Harris. Address 6319 Maxtown Road.
Okay, and then?
Aaron Willie, also 6319 Maxtown Road.
McKenzie Yoke. I'm with Sandstucker.
Okay. Do you have a presentation or anything that you want to add to what Joe presented?
I don't think so. He covers it pretty well. He's pretty thorough in what he does. But yeah, I mean, it's just, we're just looking to expand and develop the other side of that lot. So Joe pretty much covered all the, the fine details of it, so.
All right, then we will go on to public comment.
Rick Whelan, 9500 Britton Woods Drive again. Trustees, under the intent and purpose of Article 13, it notes that the purpose of this district is to bring into stuff into an industrial park setting. And I don't know what that means. I don't know if anybody knows what it means, an industrial park setting. Does that mean we want to keep more open space and trees and landscaping and stuff around these industrial units? If that's the case, then I think this one needs to up its game a little bit. With their new development, they're taking out some major, big trees on that would be the, what, east side? And they're only proposing to put in four new trees, which start out at about a two and a half inch caliper and take off from there. So I'd like to see a little bit more trees put in on there. I really don't see any landscaping on that whole left, on the whole east side of the property in between there at all. I see a little bit of shrubs up across the front, which is what they have on the other part of the building or whatever, which is bare minimum as far as landscaping stuff. But if you want to create any type of a park setting, you should try to put some nicer trees in there, some pine trees, mix it up a little bit, sparse out some stuff, but add a little bit more to that stuff. I don't know if you guys have been by there or whatever. I drove by the site this evening, the back of the site with that drainage ditch and stuff in there. Nobody's mowed that grass back there for I don't know how long. And I don't know what our zoning stuff says requires that. If you're going to own a site like that, it'd at least be nice to mow the stuff a couple of times a year and knock that tall stuff down. Very unsightly back there. Wouldn't be permitted in a front yard area at all, even though it is a drainage retention basin. And if it's not designed to be a bio-retention basin, all that foliage and stuff needs to come out of there. And I guess they're adding a new retention pond and stuff to the back of it. So I'd like to see when they're doing that new construction, if they could clean up the whole back of that lot, mow that stuff down, and then kind of keep it that way from here on out, instead of it overgrowing back there. With their previous divergences, they didn't have to plant any other trees and stuff in the back. We used to have some zoning in our stuff before, and Joe took it out of there as far as trees and stuff were supposed to be planted in around those retention ponds. I'd like to review back when that was taken out and why it's not proposed in the new stuff even. So we're kind of giving developers a lot easier way to go here. But if you want to create a industrial park setting, we need to up our game on a little bit of this stuff and keep it that way. It also mentioned in their text that they have a screen dumpster. I'm reading their text on their stuff tonight that they had turned in on their stuff. There's no screening around the dumpster. It just sits wide open in the back back there, unless they're just counting the screening in the back. Also, Joe mentioned something about tires, and they're storing a bunch of old tires and stuff back in that area. Not one or two, probably 200 tires. And they can tell me if that's wrong. But tires hold water. These are not covered. There's no shed or nothing over top of them, so they're out in the open. And I don't know how long they've been there. Don't know how long they're going to be there. I don't think our zoning should keep tires and stuff back in somebody's property if they're not covered up and kept out of the weather. There's also some skids, 50-gallon drums, other incidental stuff sitting back in that area and stuff too, which needs to be addressed as far as storage on the lot. One other issue is that corner that if you look at their drawing on their parking lot right up there, there's a big white area in the upper east corner. And it doesn't designate what that is. Is that just open space area? Because right now, in their parking lot, and they've got solid fencing going around there, so you can't really plant anything in there real good. It's a black fence. It's going to get a bunch of heat and stuff in that area. Right now, they've got two trailers sitting in that area on their existing property. Also says something in their text that they won't have any trailers sitting out there. And those trailers that they have, you can, they override the height of the fence that they have screening in them. But if they are going to put something in there, then that text, then that, that corner needs to be designated on what it is. If it's just open space, I'd assume that they'd want to go ahead and pave the whole thing and park their trailers back there again, like they have them now. They're running a fence down that property line now about, I don't know what it is, 60 feet or whatever and that type of stuff, which is a nice way to shield some of that stuff in there. And then it's open all the rest of the way. But from that fence on down to the front of the property line on that east side would be a nice area to get some additional landscaping or something in there for our industrial park setting. There's also a two-foot section that's missing out of the back of the fence on the back side of the wall right now. So a lot of my stuff is, if we're going to have industrial stuff in places, you know, for people to put stuff in, let's keep, let's keep it up. You know, I bring this up in the past. Our zoning department should go out and check some of this stuff. Obviously, nobody does because that's the disrepairing stuff that it's in. I'd like to see this changed in the future. I'd like to see the new applicants take it from here, do their application, and if they can up their game on it, it would help everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's nobody else here for public comments, so I'm going to close public comment. I will give the applicant an opportunity to address any, anything you want.
I'd like to speak to all that because a lot of what he said is complete, false, false, false.
Okay.
So we'll start with the trees. There's only two trees that are going to be coming down. There's not a whole lot of trees, and we're only putting a couple of trees back in. There are two trees that have to be cut down. That is it. We are adding three trees out front, two on the east front corner and then one on right in front of the drive there, which are marked, they're proposed. As far as the screening on the east side of the lot between us and Hassy's property, there is already a bunch of trees on that tree, on that property line that go all the way back to the end of our property. There's cattails that are all along that property, you know, especially in- There's cattails that are all along that property, you know, especially in the summer, you can hardly even see Hassy's property from our property. There's a ton of screening already there on the east side. So that's all false, as far as that goes. I think there's plenty of landscaping, you know, this is an industrial business, you know. As far as industrial park goes, I would think, you know, of like the J Company or the industrial park over where Worthington Cylinders is, those are industrial parks. They're not parks to meet, you know, to be parks for people. So, you know, that is complete false narrative by, by him and his comment. As far as the tires go in the back, our tires are picked up every two weeks. So tires do not sit in the back, they get picked up every two weeks by a tire company. We recycle all of our tires, that's why we save them back there, they all get recycled. But they come twice a month and pick up all of our tires. So they're not sitting there, they're not collecting water for days, you know, weeks and months on end, it's not attracting, you know, any insects or anything, we've never had problems with it. So we do do a lot of tires. And right now, yes, you know, they're scheduled to come out this week and pick them up, so there's probably a hundred tires sitting back there.
Just wondering if it was trash day tomorrow, right?
But Liberty Tire, they pick up our tires twice a month, so we recycle all of our tires, we recycle all of our oil. There is no oil drums back there, there's one empty windshield washer fluid drum, a blue windshield washer fluid drum that is back there. But it's a plastic windshield washer drum, it is not oil, and it is empty, there's nothing in it. And that again, Glockner Oil takes those every week when they're empty, they're switched out. So we set that, that one out there, they take them, it's not sitting there all the time. What else do I need to speak on? The corner, or the fence pieces that are missing, that is because we had a backup in the sewer, the sanitary sewer coming out, we had to clean out. There's a clean out back there, so we, we took those boards down so we could run a hose through there to be able to clean that out back there. And we just haven't put the boards back up, and really doesn't matter, because we're going to tear that whole fence down anyways and redo it, so it doesn't really matter. As far as on the east, I guess the northeast corner where that white space is, that is just proposed to be a green space. We're probably planting some grass there. It's going to have curb around it as far as on the parking lot side and then fence on the back side. So it'll be filled in with dirt, and there'll probably just be mulch or something there or some kind of grass. So that's the extent of what's going to be back there. You know, as far as the trailers go, there's nothing that says that we can't park trailers on our property. Those are our company trailers that are logoed Two Harris Automotive, there are two trailers back there, but they are back behind the fence where, you know, we've never had to complain about them until he said, you know, had to say something, but, you know, they're our company trailers, so they will be sitting there, you know, we're not moving them. You know, and again, they will be back over sitting where they're at, so. And that's over further, in the white space, you know, of where they're parked at now is where they'll stay parked at. So as far as the dumpster goes, the dumpster is blocked, we have, the privacy fence goes all the way around it, you can't see it from the road, the residents can't see it. You know, no, there's not an enclosure around the dumpster, but there doesn't need to be because it is enclosed completely behind it, you can't see it from the road, nobody can see it, so except for us. You know, I think that's pretty much it. So as far as not mowing the grass, that's a total lie, we mow that property, it gets mowed every week in the summer. You know, we have a landscape crew that comes out and mows that, it's not mowed right now, and there are weeds back there. Where we mounted up the dirt in the back, we do not mow up there, we have an agreement with the people back there, we let that grow up in the summer. It provides shading, you know, blockers to the houses back there. And that was a request of one of the residents that lived back there. So, you know, we do not mow the top of the hill, yes, it is, it is high, but that's at the request of the people back there. So that's, that's the gist of that. But as far as the rest of that field, that whole side field, it's mowed every single week. You know, that whole lot had weeds as tall as the ceiling before we bought it, and we cleaned it up, and it looks great, so that's how I feel about that. So I think that's pretty much addressed everything he had to say negatively about this, so.
Thank you. Board discussion. Trustee Goodman, do you have any questions, discussion, comments?
I have a couple of comments and a question. We'll start with comments.
Yep.
First off, congratulations on the success of your business.
Thank you.
I was on this board when the initial application came through, and I know at that time, your goal was to see how it worked, and clearly has worked very well, and you're back with us again. It's always nice to see a successful business in Genoa Township, and you have fit that bill for yourself and for us.
Thank you.
So having said that, I was a little confused with your drawing to start with, because it must have been me, I didn't have enough coffee that morning, but Mr. Schaefer helped me to understand that these buildings are indeed connected, that you will now have an L.
It'll be one big building.
When I looked at this, it looked like you had a driveway between them, and I, I thought, why? But we got that squared away in my mind, so thank you, Mr. Schaefer. One question I have, though, is how many, you've got a lot of parking, and that's good. How many cars do you have stored at any given point outside, a rough estimate, but overnight kinds of things?
If the vehicles are stored overnight, it's hard to say at any one given time. Maybe five, six, seven, eight, it's hard to tell with the new building being added on. Most of the time, if a vehicle is being kept overnight before, or being dropped off during business hours, it's going to be stored inside. So we try not to leave any kind of vehicles outside unsupervised or anything like that.
Sure.
Project cars, kind of the same thing, I mean, at most, three to four days, I mean, if we're waiting on parts or something like that. But not any cars.
Most of our vehicles are now the same day. I mean, we do do a lot of, you know, right now in our current situation, we're doing twenty-five to thirty cars a day. With the new building, it's probably going to be forty, fifty cars a day. I mean, it's, you know, we're just, we're slammed busy, I mean, so we need the space. But yeah, I mean, we don't store cars, we, you know, the whole premise of our business is to fix them, get them paid for, and get them picked up.
Get them back on the road.
I mean, we don't like cars sitting there, after three days, we charge storage fees. You know, if customers don't pick up within three days and being notified, they're getting charged fifteen dollars a day. You know, like Aaron said, as far as the project cars, I mean, our classic cars, we work on, all that stuff stays inside. And then all the cars we're working on are inside.
What about employees, number of employees and cars that employees account for?
Right now, we have seven employees at the shop, eight including myself, which employees all park out back, so I mean, that's all, all out back. You know, customer cars will all be off in the front, off to the side. Cars that are done, that are finished will mostly be in the front, in front of the building, in front of the office. You know, cars that are being worked off on will be more off to the east side over there in those parking spaces, but, you know. Typically, we don't, I mean, unless we're waiting on cars, I mean, cars are in the out pretty quick.
Sure.
I mean, at most, maybe a week, I mean, that's, you know, that'd be the most that a car would be stuck there, so.
Okay, thank you. That's all I really had.
Okay. I had parking questions as well, but I'm going to phrase it in a different way.
Okay.
You have parking now, and you've had your business for a few years, do you feel like you have adequate parking?
We do not now.
You don't? Okay.
No, we're short on parking definitely, so that's another reason we added extra.
So that's what I was wondering, I mean, I know our code is geared towards businesses who just have customers, but it's not customers leaving cars, right? So you feel like now that you're, you're adding bays, of course you're going to need more parking, you feel like now you've fixed your parking problem with this? Okay.
I think when our original plan went through, we kind of stuck to that close minimum with the zoning approvals. Now, you know, with the new proposed, I think the zoning was thirty-two parking spots was the minimum allowed. And I think there's fifty, fifty-four, I believe so, well over what, what is really needed.
Right.
Okay.
And I mean, as of now, we're, you know, most days we're still good. I mean, we have, along, like the east side of that drive where it's curbed now, which, I mean, there's cars there, I mean, we, you know, we have cars on the grass, I mean, it's just, I mean, you guys probably drove, but you're in behind seeing, I mean, it's, there's days it gets hectic as far as the parking we have now, so we, we need, we need some parking.
Very good. Well, and I, I trust your judgment because you run a successful business, you know what you need more than we know what you need. Okay.
You know, the new building is going to pretty much double our capacity. You know, we have seven lifts now, well, almost double, we have seven now, we're going to go to twelve. You know, the current building is going to become our performance, a classic car shop, so that's what's going to be in the current building that we're in now. The existing business will be moving into the new site, so that's what, that's what it is, just to explain.
And back to the comment on trees, you are not asking for a divergence for landscape?
No.
Okay, so it fits our code?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
And there's only two trees being cut down.
Yeah, yeah, plus you're adding one.
We're adding.
So in the end, you're plus one?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to read my paper. We'll go here. Do we, you want me to read this or kind of walk through it first, fill in the blanks?
Sort of up to you, you know, staff always thinks it's best to probably walk through the motion before you actually make it, just so there's no surprises or anything. But up to the board how you want to proceed.
Oh, I know the answer to this, but Joe, have we had any complaints for this business, neighbors, noise?
I don't recall any recently, and the one that we last heard was, like I said, twenty nineteen, and I, I think that, I think they worked with that neighbor and resolved those issues and...
I'll be happy to comment on that, I mean, I'm not sure of it, but, you know, that was right after we built it and moved in. And the people in the back, that's part of the reason that we leave the grass high, but they were complaining about the trash trucks coming, you know, early, which we stopped, they come in the middle of the day now, I've got it with the trash company. And then the tow trucks, but there's really nothing I can do about, you know, somebody breaks down in the middle of the night and they have their car towed in, there's nothing I can do to stop a tow truck coming in. So that was their complaint, so, I mean, you know, which, yes, we've heard, nothing has happened since that, and that was in early twenty nineteen.
Correct, and they are mowing that eastern section that you can see from Max Town Road. Yeah, the, the back section, I was out there today, yeah, is, is a little taller, but honestly, I didn't think it looked, you know, but it looked, looked like a field to, to me, like what I would expect a natural area to be. So to me, as long as the storm, if the stormwater is functioning and the neighbors behind aren't complaining about the vegetation, to me, there's no reason for the township to get involved. That means everyone's happy, everyone's content, the neighbors are accepting of the conditions, I don't know why we would go and tell them, no, we think you can get better. They're happy, we're happy.
Thank you for being a good business, and thank you for being a good neighbor, I appreciate that. All right, so we go through here, we don't have any commitments, correct?
No, it doesn't sound like it.
I don't need any other commitments. And, and we're not asking for any additional divergences, so we're good with that?
Skip that section.
Okay. So now we're to the findings of fact?
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, I think this coincides with our, company has a plan. This is dedicated commercial district, and I feel like it's a good vision for this area. You good with that?
I'm fine with that, and I would add also that it fits the zoning resolution with no additional divergences.
Okay, I think we're ready. All right, I will move to concur with the zoning commission's recommendation of approval and thus approve with modifications and subject final development plan amendment applications submitted by Carl Ruser to construct an approximately six thousand square foot addition on properly, property located at sixty-three nineteen Max Town Road, Westerville, Ohio four three zero eight two, currently zoned planned industrial district PID. As further described, detailed, and illustrated in the plans and materials of ZC case number twenty twenty-four dash oh six, also known as Harris Automotive, and furthermore incorporating exhibits A through I, as well as any commitments made by the applicant during this hearing, which there are none. Can I skip this next? I don't even have to read the phrases, okay. This motion to approve the subject final development plan amendment, which is not subject to referendum, shall be valid for three years pursuant to the terms and condition of section twenty-seven twelve point one nine of the Genoa Township zoning resolution and shall be administered in accordance with applicable standards of article twenty-seven of said resolution, as may be amended. This motion is based on the following findings of facts and conclusion. Number one, it coincides with Genoa Township's comprehensive plan. Number two, it fits the zoning resolution with no additional divergences. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Roll call, trustee Goodman?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. At this time, I will announce the hearing is closed at seven thirty-two PM. So I'll move to adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-two PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Goodman?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries.